Including the empty traffic and use patterns. And specifically how these crosswalk issues by the school since there have been changes to operations, which impact. In F10 news, for example, there were seven people this morning that crossed. And the classes are not going over weekly anymore to the library, so that decreases the use. And lastly, have what other countermeasures to whatever the problems have been considered? Specifically, there are no pavement markings. This is kind of a chronic issue. And I believe it's the municipal maintenance responsibility to make sure there's durable, highly visible crosswalk striping. And that is not the case, so I'm wondering if the town is going to address that.
Okay, well, thank you for that list of questions. Not so much comments, I guess. And when we get to discussing it, we will have a discussion. And if we don't hit everything, next time we talk about it, we'll try and get to the rest of it. Phil?
Two questions. One is, did a financial estimate come through for Avatar for the revaluation? And the other, could either company get close enough to finishing a revale in time for revised MS1 in 2025 as opposed to 2026?
Okay. And I can give you a quick answer to that. And we will also get to Avatar later on the agenda. But no, 2025 is out. And no one is more disappointed than I. Possibly Chris Brown.
Information and dispersions.
Yes. Okay. And Rich?
Good morning.
Good morning.
No, I don't, I don't have anything new to add. Thank you.
Okay. And Sean, you're here. We'll be talking with you later in non-public.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So, moving on to the agenda. Minutes from November 14th. What do we wish to do with the minutes?
No move.
Thank you, Ben.
I had a couple of little comments. Were those circulating, Dina?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? We did see your, I at least saw your comments this morning before the meeting. If there's nothing else, all those in favor say aye.
Ben aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye. So the minutes are approved. And that would be. Okay. Then, we have a manifest that's circulating. I believe it's that David's, we approved this at our last meeting. It just needs signatures. Do we, and we don't have a manifest yet. So we will do our manifest comes, we all look at it, and if we agree, we come in and sign it. Or we sign it out next meeting, but we give Dina permission to pay the bills.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That brings us to Lee Prince's favorite topic, the flashing safety sign on Route 10 in front of the school. We did, I didn't realize it was 2020, but I knew it was before everything closed down because of COVID. We did have a committee. And we had talked to the school, gotten some mixed signals at that time. And also, we did have some engineering done. And to answer one of the questions, I can say that Route 10 is a state highway. And the municipality, which we probably call Town Line, cannot paint a sidewalk or crossing, sorry, a crossing across their road. And they object to anyone doing anything that they have approved. And they have some pretty strict guidelines. Last time we very briefly talked about this, one of the members here suggested that we paint a yellow crosswalk, as they have done in Lebanon. And our chief of police let us know that that wasn't going to be happening because the state doesn't approve it on their state roads. They only use the yellow as a line stripe. So our options are very limited. We are just beginning this discussion. My understanding is, and I think Dina may have some update on what we've done before, but it continues to be very unsafe during times when people are coming to drop off or coming to pick up or parking and walking across the street when they're going between the library and the school or parked cars on the edge of the road. And I believe that our chief has said that there are times when he's still with his lights flashing and people just screaming down the road when people are getting in and out of their cars. So it continues to be an issue.
We hear that testimony from an elderly citizen who couldn't get across. Nobody was stopping for him. And there was something else.
Well, there's been a couple complaints. Sorry, my, excuse my voice.
One of the crossing guards. Michael Whitman said it was time to have a crossing.
A light there.
A light there.
And, and also my understanding is, and we will reconfirm these things, but that because it's a state road, the only thing we can put there is a state-approved crossing sign, which is a flashing sign that you push the button and it flashes and gets your attention.
I just thought about what you had.
The board.
First time. The engineering plans are all there. Are all done. And also, all the electrical work underneath.
We put it in.
Okay. So what Dina is trying to say is
Not our voice.
Is that the engineering plans, we still have them, they're all done. The, the underground installation infrastructure is done. It's there. So this would be only a question of getting the hardware and having it installed. I'm sure we'd need to update the state on it. I don't know how David and Ben feel. I feel we have come to the point where talking should be over and action should be happening. But.
But we see these signs all over the Upper Valley at the officer on Hannover, Dartmouth, Lebanon. And they're only flashed when somebody's poking a button to cross.
Right.
It's pretty innocuous. I'm, I'm all in favor.
Judy?
Yes.
I think one of the really important things to remember when we are talking about this is that, you know, I know that Lee made a point of saying that there were only seven children that crossed this morning, or seven people. This isn't just the effects of the school during school hours or school operation. I mean, this is a town crosswalk. It's the only legitimate crosswalk we have in town. You know, and I constantly, for the two days that I am there doing school crossing, you know, every five, six, seven cars, I have to tell somebody to slow it up, you know? People don't pay attention to the already yellow 20 mile an hour signs during that time period. But those, you know, somebody pushes that flashing light, that usually gets people's attention. I mean, you, like Ben already said, they're everywhere. You drive down the roads and even when people are standing on the sides of the roads and they're pushed, you push the light, well, most people ignore the sign. But as soon as you push the light that flashes, well, then people are like, oh, somebody does want to cross. You know, it's all about the visual. It's all about the safety. And, you know, I, I think we've eluded this for long enough. And I agree with Judy that it's time to act and do the right thing for the community, not just based upon the school.
David?
I'm inclined to agree that, that putting a flashing light on the crosswalk is a good idea and probably you're in favor of it. But my view is that before we do that, we ought to have a hearing. We ought to give people notice. We ought to give people a chance to come in and say their piece. And there may be people who have intelligent things to say that would sway my view one way or another. I know you got, I know this has come up before, but it hasn't come up in the last year or two.
Right.
And I think if we just went ahead and voted and said, okay, let's go do it today, people would feel blindsided and there's no need for that. It's not like, you know, a month delay won't make much difference, I don't think.
So let's schedule something for maybe January, early January.
If that's okay with you two, I mean.
Yeah, no, a hearing's fine. We should do it.
We, we should, or have it not a full hearing, but a public meeting. And make sure everyone knows what's coming, make sure the information gets out.
Yeah, this is one of those things where I'm not always very good at predicting what, what's gonna get people wrapped around the axle, but, but this month.
So we'll get some information from the state about what's the options.
Yep. Rich?
And I would certainly defer to Michael Whitman's judgment. He's been a crossing guard far longer than I, so that's good. And I think that's a sensible thing to do. Do we have a ballpark number of what this will cost?
No, I think, I think the numbers were.
And I think if Debbie told me right, that the Lion Foundation already approved the money for it last time.
Oh. Wow.
I think they approved the engineering, but we can look back and see.
Yeah, so we need to update what the cost is.
I mean, certainly if you're gonna have a public forum, you should say.
Yeah, we'll have.
I don't have my tax bill, but I was just driving by and I didn't pay.
And I strongly support a public forum.
Thank you.
No guardrails.
What is a? Let's see. Sure, January. We meet again on? I wouldn't mind doing it at a Thursday meeting, but I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if we should do it in an afternoon when maybe more people could come. So. I'm looking at maybe a Tuesday, a Monday or a Tuesday in the middle of the month, like the 13th or 14th. Do you have any?
I open for me all those times, just come and wait.
Okay, let's make it, try and make it Tuesday, the 14th.
January.
Yep, January. Yep. Okay. Public meeting for discussion of the crosswalk flashing sign.
Six o'clock, six thirty, seven.
Let's do six.
You might be running into a school board meeting that night.
Well then, that won't work. Want to make it three o'clock, four o'clock?
But you miss the working people.
Okay.
We, we might be running into a.
School board meeting.
Well, we are running into, I mean.
I don't know.
Aren't you on the school board meeting?
No, I'm the treasurer. He's on the school board.
Is that a school board meeting or not, Lee?
I'm, I'm double checking right now.
Okay, thank you.
And you said six.
Uh huh. I did. Good. Okay. That's okay. Okay, so we're going.
Yeah, sorry, yes, it is showing one on January 7th. It needed it January 14th, it's not ready to leave.
Oh, okay. Okay.
On the website.
And what, what time does that start?
Uh, seven o'clock.
Okay, so six o'clock, let's do it for six. Thank you. That's helpful. Yep. Yep. And while we have our calendars out, I am not going to be available for what I think is a January second select board meeting. Do you show that, Dina?
Six years since I retired. Yikes.
Ninth it is? Okay, good. Perfect. Very good.
How old are you?
All right. Twelve and twenty-six. Yep, got it. Okay.
One.
Perfect. Moving right on. Mr. Bailey. You're, you just sat down.
Get that pillow over there?
No.
Stan wants us to, wants me to text him if there's any questions. So can you turn them? Can you do the Edgeo Bridge first?
Okay. You're gonna give us an update on the Edgeo Bridge?
Oh, I?
Yes.
I think, yeah.
Or Ben.
Stan, crossing came in. You know, when you buy an old house and you start tearing the boards apart, don't be too surprised about what you find.
That's a good way of putting it.
The pictures.
Those main planks going across underneath, holding up the decking, were flipped and spikes were driven into them in the prior thing where split the, what do you call those cross pieces?
Carriers?
Carriers, uh, what you.
Carriers.
Anyways, he said the current load limit is not even three tons due to the damage that they did by driving spikes into those beams. So he, he proposed a couple of options here, which Scotty and I talked about it. We decided that our recommendation would be to go with the cost of putting the new six by twelve by twenty foot floor beams. And the most expensive cost is $163,000. Second option was $123,000. And even what we had there was the least expensive, but the bridge was very poor shape.
Least durable too. The number of times you can redo the surface.
Yeah, it was the cheapest one. This was the last time that you do it. The other one was the steel plies.
This one is doing the job.
Normally I'm a fan of metal over wood. My, my own predilection, but, but here, they're gonna rust and when you get salted, that's gonna be a mess.
So, I mean, be better options. Unfortunately, the most expensive.
No, I read that thing and I thought, I was thinking that's what we're gonna do too.
But the difference in price is not huge. It's like $40,000 is the difference between number one and number two. So it'll mean that we have to come up with some more money to do the project, which we'll have to discuss some options of doing that. But it's, you can look at these pictures. I don't know if anybody out there wants to look at pictures, but that's split all the way down through there. They just drove the spikes right into the wood, which split the beams. He's gonna pre-drill all those, so there's very little compression. Enough compression to hold the nail, but not enough to split the beams.
Can I use a nail or a spike instead of using a screw, a lag?
That's what, that's what they use, is nails, spikes.
Yeah, why? Why wouldn't you use a lag?
Well, you don't, there's not a strength. It's not necessary. You're holding down the.
Oh, yeah, you don't need it to be.
Right. But even screws, if they weren't pre-drilled, would have, would cause splitting.
I forgot what he said. He's gonna put a membrane or some sort over that before the plank just go down. So that deserves it even more, so.
So.
And there's a, you know, they used to put car paper down, but today there's all kinds of nice membranes. Our feeling was, you know, the cost of straining out the bridge and doing all that work, it's silly not to do the job right.
And this would allow this deck replacement and two more deck replacements.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least.
And then he said it also changes the load rating to five to 10 tons?
10 tons.
So then the thing restricting this bridge is just gonna be its height.
But I'd say, my feeling is leave it a three-ton bridge passing cars only the way it is right now. I'm afraid if you increase it some, it'll. You're gonna get some box trucks or something that think they're gonna get through that.
Well, this will, the increased load ratings, I mean, that exists, even if you post a three-ton limit. Scott will be able to go through and do that short section and or up to the offer line and back with ton trucks. So it's gonna save us money on that end of things.
But like right now, it's not even a three-ton rating.
Without understanding that, yeah.
That was a pretty scary piece of information.
That is a pretty.
Just because the bridge is gonna fall over. But reality was the bridge decking and beams were in bad enough shapes of the rating that.
Yeah, yeah. And that means, I mean, SUVs are.
Yeah, three-quarter ton pickup truck.
Yeah.
Which are going through there all the time.
And, yeah, so when we, we posted with a weight limit and passenger cars only, is it possible to get that sign or another sign put at the orphaned end of that road?
There used to be one that said three-ton. Was that three-ton, Sean?
Yep, we have posed right across the street from Tim Cook's house where the telephone in the town line is. And that sign post, that post that our highway guys put up is now gone.
Okay.
I get shut down every time I ask this, but I always wonder why we can't put like a hanging metal bar?
No, we discussed that too. We think that's a good idea.
You do think that's a good idea?
Yeah.
You know, like something so that in advance of each side of the truck, the bridge, if someone comes, they're gonna hit that and then they know, and that's a lot less.
I was telling them I had it. I get updates and stuff through different towns and stuff on the New Hampshire. And there was one, there was a town that their bridges had had some months that they just, I think last year they installed the beam one across.
Yeah.
I mean, it don't look that.
Yeah.
But it's not right at the bridge.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's up to the floor, isn't it?
Twenty fifty feet and then people.
I think it's like Pembroke or someplace like that. I, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we saw a picture of that a while back, but also just, was it last week?
Yeah, there was one very recent.
You have this great picture of the sign and the bridge and the truck right there.
Yeah.
Stucky.
Wow. You can get shut down.
Well, David. Well done. Phil?
If it's relevant, you have $287,000 in the Emergency Highway Repair Fund if this is a source of funding this project.
Two eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay. What's?
I don't know what it's typically used for. I just have this thing here.
I'm not sure if we can use it on bridges, but we will double check that. Thank you.
Can I just say, money-wise, $163,000, we would not, I gave you guys the numbers, but we need to, including all the donations and this change order, we need $61,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Dina said we need $61,000. She's speaking in coked, yeah.
She's trying to make sure she doesn't lose her voice permanently. Okay, well, I think we have consensus, but maybe we should have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, David.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor of option one?
Ben aye.
David aye.
Judy aye. So that is approved.
Hey, Ben, how can they use Doug fir on the beams as opposed to some harder wood like oak or something? Just 'cause it's.
Well, it's probably the length and red oak isn't the greatest thing.
It probably rocks less.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
And should we ask about applying?
A what?
Applying to the Lion Foundation. Do you want me to?
Debbie's on the Lion Foundation and she suggested that we go and request some funds from the Lion Foundation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Lion Foundation can only give money to nonprofits, the town, which is, would be a nonprofit. They can't give money to regular people's projects, so they have, they have money.
Well.
Move that we officially ask the Lion Foundation for help repairing the Edgeo Bridge.
Well, thank you, thank you.
I'll second that.
Ben, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Ben aye.
Judy aye. You have it already? Dina has it ready to go, so, okay.
Thank you.
They just, they just put up, I don't know, $37,000 for the scala singles on the old school buildings. So I, I put this in a higher priority than.
Well, we all have different priorities.
Do, does this change to the plans with respect to the repair of the bridge? What does it do to the timeline for the repair? Do you guys know? Adds about a month?
Yeah.
So when, when do we think, assuming everything goes okay, we don't have any other glitches, when would that put us back?
March.
March, okay.
He went ahead and ordered the beach scala.
Not yet, he's waiting.
Is he waiting?
Said he was going to, yes. Waiting for me to text him.
Text away.
He's ready to go. When he said the bridge is straightening up in good shape. It's self-supporting now. The guy wires are no longer necessary. We talked about maybe trying to get those culverts that are sticking up out of the water out of there in one way or another. There, we believe they're just stuck in the mud. There is one laying on the right side in weeds, so they must be stuck in the mud. They are kinda on site. It'd be nice to get them out of there.
Okay. So he's gonna look at doing that too?
Yeah, he's saying while his barge is there, he can hook up to him and then maybe we get cable and stuff. Somebody like that and kind of puts attention on it.
Okay, something for the future. So Scott?
Yeah.
Would you like to tell us about, uh, Rapton Turnpike project?
Unfortunately, Gina can't really speak much.
I'll interrupt you if you're wrong, don't worry.
So what, what's Frank think of this?
He hates it.
He hates it, don't worry, don't be bossing him around.
My grandson loves it.
She spoke with Pathways on Dharma Plan. I believe it's about two thousand dollars.
Preliminary plan?
Yes, a preliminary.
Two and three thousand.
Okay, that's an engineered plan.
Yes.
This is, this is for the washout of.
Yeah. To give to Dartmouth.
It would give us enough information to have a meeting with Dartmouth, to show them all we have.
Okay. And is that a board meeting with Dartmouth, or is that Scott, maybe Ben? And Pathways, great, and that's two to three thousand?
Yes, yes, and the only other thing we talked about was the right-of-way. And, um, I, we couldn't find anything where that road may have been. You know, his team, I have a team for it. So because of the turnpike, it's automatically four rods.
Automatically?
Four rods, a four-rod width, which is, what's a rod?
Sixty-sixty. Sixteen, I know, it's crazy, but because of the turnpike, that's what it is.
Four rods.
R O D.
That's a unit of measurement I have not previously encountered. Sixteen and a half feet, oh, that's convenient.
Chain, lengths, rods.
That's awesome.
That's a really old term, so sixteen and a half feet, so each lane is like eight and a quarter feet, that's cozy. No, sixty-one rod. That's.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, I, I skipped that.
Four rods. So it's three feet from the center line.
Okay. So, yeah.
And just comes into play.
Route ten down here is fifty feet from the center line each side, so that's a hundred-foot wide road. But that's a relatively new road.
That ledge up there looks pretty broken up.
It's hard to tell until you get into it now.
So do you, do you need approval from us to go ahead with the Pathways project?
Yeah.
Kind of need that we go ahead with the Pathways?
And the rush on this is that we probably will need funds, Nora.
For, for the two to three thousand?
No.
For they act, to do the project?
It'll have to be a warrant article.
Okay. But we can come up with a two to three thousand now for this, okay. David, did you wanna second this?
I'll second, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Ben, aye?
Judy, aye? Do we have any other comments from the public? Okay.
Nope.
And so Scott, you'll get the engineering and you'll, maybe you and Ben can chit-chat with the college and.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent, yeah, we'll do a warrant article, and, uh, do we have any clue as to what it's gonna be? How much that'll be? No, okay.
No, but it'll be less than five hundred thousand dollars, which is what it's gonna be.
Oh, well, good.
Well, that was just engineering, that was engineering and, that was a hire and. That was just guess. Which.
Okay, what else do you have for us?
Well, I changed my budget, right? So.
I think in our packets, guys, there is a, um, an updated budget for Scott's Highway Department. So you put money back in for your building maintenance?
Yeah.
To do garage doors?
Yeah, and contracted services for summertime. I took five thousand out of contracted services in the winter.
Okay.
Brought that down to seventeen, and then I took out roadside mowing.
And, well, it's great to save that amount of money, twenty-five thousand. Your plan is to maybe do it every other year, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to revisit it next year, I mean, there's nowhere in this budget that I can cut anything. There's nowhere. I did look at sandy gravel bids being increased, it was a dollar per yard increase. So there's some money that kind of is missing right there, but I didn't add anything to it, so.
So you needed that, the rest of that money to go with regular operations?
So I mean, it's not.
You're not gonna have anything extra in your budgets, what you're saying, okay?
That's the only place I could see that, I could cut, where did you go before, four years ago? Yeah, it was ridiculous, but.
Yeah, it's nice to have that done on a regular basis, and I know there are people in town who feel very strongly about not having it done. So if anything had to go, if you were able to put something back in, would it be the roadside mowing? Or would it be something else, contracted services?
I think probably roadside mowing, I'm not too worried about winter time. That should be fine. I know he has going up on his rate on the contracted services for the summertime, which is rare, he hasn't gone up in, I don't know how long.
Several years anyway.
I did get an email from Pike, which is a little bit crushed now. In fact, of January eighth or something like that, everything's going up five percent. I mean, I don't buy a lot from him, but if we have month season like we did a few years ago, yeah, I'm gonna buy.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay, so, um, the message I will carry to the budget committee, if Ben and David agree, is that you have gone through and go down in this big cut of twenty-five thousand dollars. You would like to see it restored, but you're just saying that there won't be roadside mowing.
Come in. I cannot see anywhere else to cut in, I mean.
And you noticed that you did get restored your building maintenance for the garage doors and your.
Yeah, that's right.
Your other, your places that I hopefully took money away. It was, it was back in there.
It's like, quite a lot of people didn't know, yeah, I rented that escalator to do that project of turnpike. But like ten or eleven thousand that came from, um, went to Blake's for trucking, gravel. That's where a lot of that went, that's where that money went, I mean.
Yeah.
If I can get chief and then we can, they, they could get it, so.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much, I appreciate that you looked at that, you worked with Gina, and, um, we, the budget committee asked us to try and find, asked me, to try and find a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to come out of the whole proposed upgrade budget. So your contribution is a really good start to that, and I appreciate it. So if, if they did have a change of heart, or if we have a change of heart, when we get to discussing the whole budget later, we'll see about putting it back in. Thank you.
As I said, I tried.
I know, I know.
I mean, it may look like there's a lot of money left, but.
Well, winter's coming. You'll use a lot of money this winter. Yeah, this next month.
And you know what good thing is, we haven't been out in November, like last year, we were out quite a few times already, so.
Yeah. It could just be.
I'll fill the salt, yeah. Just before the, which is pretty well full now, but just before the budget's over, before the end of the year, and that will help me.
Through the year.
Yeah.
And, and that'll probably use up most of the left over. Looks like it's extra. All right.
It don't take long, it's five, six thousand bucks or whatever.
That's what salt is. Well, that won't take long at all. All right, anything else for Scott?
No.
Ben, David, anything for Scott? Ben, thank you for going out on the Angel Bridge and going with Scott and talking to Stan, shake that. Okay, I think before we get to the rest of the budget, we should talk about the, what, the software upgrade?
Here is also.
We are, thank you, thank you so much.
All right, how are you doing, Scott?
Hey, have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
And thank the crew for us.
I will.
Thank you. Okay, software update proposal. This is what we sort of have. You notice in, in our packets, revale info. And I'm gonna try to do this so that Gina doesn't have to talk too much, but she's the one who's really well versed in this, but basically, nothing, neither Avatar nor, my brain is really up to lunch.
Vision.
Vision can do it in twenty-five. In twenty-six, Avatar is strongly suggesting that we do, it's almost like a third option. It, and it's not their guys going out and doing the full revale, but it's their guys going out and they will go to every single driveway. They will drive in, they will look, they will have the vision card, they will look at the card. They will assess whether or not what's on the card is what they're seeing. If it's not, they will proceed further to correct the card. And they also have someone with expertise in doing, um, what they call a conversion from the vision to the Avatar software, and that they can do in twenty-twenty-six. And it's, again, they will be using the vision stuff, converting it, but also on the ground. They said every driveway. So, um, if you guys have, Ben or David have any questions, or do you want Gina to give you more explanation? Now's the time to speak up, because if we're going to do this, I think we need to sign a contract and make it a done deal. Anything? Here, no go, Ben? We have a contract proposal, oh, well, Gina, tell us what it is.
Sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
How does that compare to the vision contract that we were proposing?
Well, it's not a straight comparison, because this is a little bit.
Yeah, I understand, I would write it dollars, what was that?
Fifty.
It was fifty something. And then.
Just a statistical, and the big one was ninety-two.
So we're saving thirty grand.
And we can get it done next year.
We can get it done next year, we're, we're, it's thirty grand cheaper, it's not the full, but it's close.
Very close. It's twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's what we would do with vision too.
Yes, vision can't do it either.
Could you say the dollar figure again, I couldn't quite hear.
This one is sixty. Sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Sixty-one, one hundred and fifteen, wow.
I don't think those hearing aids are working.
Not for the whisper.
They're specially tuned up for Gina's voice today.
So David, did you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we've moved forward with the.
Avatar.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ben, further discussion?
We don't need to do a, a bid or anything, we're legally required to agree.
We did one.
Did one, but Avatar did bid, it is.
No, but Ben, they did get a copy of the RFP that went out, and they responded to that.
Yeah, my only question here is, are we in compliance with whatever New Hampshire laws apply to purchasing a.
Because this is a specialty item also, you don't have to bid, you should, but you don't have to. But these are the only two companies that were interested at all.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
I know it's painful to listen to me.
No.
Sorry.
David, aye?
And Judy, aye, I'm just trying to save your voice.
I know, but I just wanna say that, and I said this to Judy earlier, she can repeat it if she remembers, but is that? No, this is not a reason why to do this, but in twenty-six, if we don't do it, the DRA is gonna make us do it the next year. Now, the bigger issue is the shortage of companies and assessors that will even do this. I mean, there's towns out there that can't get anybody to do them in twenty-six.
And so also I would add, thank you, Gina. This is sort of striking for the iron spot, and we have availability, but I would also add that I spoke at great length with a canover recessor who's worked all over the upper valley, both with vision and with Avatar. You can find no fault with Avatar, and he says the way that they go about doing what we've just agreed to hire them to do is perfect. They have conversion people, they convert vision cards, their people go out, he said, again, as we hear from Avatar, every driveway, they verify what they're physically seeing, and what's on the card. And he thought that that particular, um, update is a very good product, so.
I don't personally think that everybody, somebody, everybody needs to go out with a measuring tape, you know, and measure everybody's garage, I mean. That, that's unnecessary, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I have to apologize, I would ask that somebody summarize what Gina said, because there was a lot that certainly was not audible back here. Is that possible?
Oh, okay, so, one big takeaway is that if the town does not voluntarily do something in twenty-twenty-six, the DRA will make us do it in twenty-twenty-seven, however, there are these two companies that are doing it, and they're pretty well looked up, and there are other towns in New Hampshire that have been waiting several years to get it done, so. Our feeling is that we need to go ahead, and that's the advice she's been given as well. Was there more to that, uh, that's pretty much what she said.
Okay, thank you, and then, and then just to be sure, so Avatar will do this, I'm gonna call it a driveway review.
It's a revale, but. It's a revale, but it.
Right, so, do the, do a, do a, I didn't, I almost said the wrong word. Do the revaluation with the driveway review and convert everything from vision over to the Avatar software.
Right.
All for the bargain price of sixty-one thousand dollars and change.
Well, the sixty-one.
Okay, good, I'm, I'm glad I asked the question.
The sixty-one thousand is for the revale.
Ah.
And I believe the changeover, but we will still have to buy the products, the tax product and the assessing product, which is. Twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars each, and then there will be. A yearly fee after that, and the Avatar purchase and the Avatar appraisal, revale. Will occur in twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
Okay.
You know, close to each other.
Okay, thank you.
And. Our belief is that it will be done in time for the tax bills and the MS one for twenty-twenty-six.
Right, yes, well, yes, for twenty-twenty-six.
And just conveniently, there's about sixty-two grand in the trust funds for the revaluation.
Excellent.
Right, so, could I ask that in the contract we signed with Avatar, that they, we asked them to deliver the results. At the end of July, first of August?
No, but we already know that the MS one will be late. They will not be able to get this done until the end of September.
Okay.
So our MS one will be October first, we hope.
Yep, all right. Good, I figured I would ask, and then you can tell me what's possible.
Yeah.
That's how it is.
MS one late. October one, hopefully.
This whole process is making me think that I should retool and become a, you know, from tax turner to, to, to appraiser or assessor.
Yeah.
Looks like there's a niche here.
Or there's, there's a reason there aren't more of them.
Don't encourage your guys to do that, we don't wanna lose it.
The shotgun's bad, I think, it's the shotgun.
Um, okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, so, it's eleven.
And I just got this contract, I'm gonna have it reviewed by Naomi.
Can we?
I think it's the state contract, but I'll look.
Um, because.
Can you vote to sign and can touch?
I was just gonna say, we should vote to sign the contract following a legal review, so that we can come in and sign it without delaying further.
I'll move that.
Thank you, David, thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye, so it's approved, pending legal. And, okay. Now the stuff that nobody wants to do. In your packet is a budget. Mine is on golden rods, and I can find it fast. And I ran out of white paper at home, so. We. At the end of the day, with Scotty's contribution, which I could tell you was a little uncomfortable with. Cause he's the one that gets yelled at when the roadside moment doesn't get done. We also again took out. Well, select board supplies, we dropped that back to five thousand from six thousand, it's only a thousand dollars, but every little bit helps. We took out the new bookkeeper grant, town clerk, fire department person. We just took it out, which saved us. A good bit of money, if we were to hire a part-time person to just be a bookkeeper, if they worked twenty hours a week, that would be an additional twenty-six thousand dollars and change. So in the town clerk side, that person who was gonna be there for sixteen hours, we took that out. We made some other small changes to her budget. Financial administration. We are putting in a. The, what we presently have for their software to go through twenty-five, knowing that in twenty-six, that number will be changing. And we did see that there was between the tax software line fifty-three, the assessing software line sixty-six. It was one lump sum, it's been divided in half, so it's the same amount, just showing up differently, again noting that in twenty-six, we'll be doing Avatar. Planning and zoning. We had taken out the vision licensing, timing is just not right on that, and. To save just not a whole lot of money, but the department had asked for twelve hundred dollars for a recording person, we zeroed that out. Most departments do their own recording where they assign an individual. It's not a lot of money, but it's a contribution. General government buildings, we went through several lines there and reduced one, two, three lines slightly. And four lines, the heat for the town offices also was reduced by eight hundred and fifty dollars. We made some modifications to cemeteries, including reducing slightly the sexton stipend. That had been recommended to go up forty-two percent, we reduced it down to a twenty percent increase. There has been an increase in responsibility and hours. And then my favorite one is the police department. So presently reflected in this budget, six months of three full-time individuals, two months, uh, two full-time individuals for six months. And the benefits that go along with that. We slightly reduced the miscellaneous line from a thousand to five hundred dollars, major equipment from twelve hundred to one thousand. And giving a, because of the X, the three-time people for six months, this is a jump. Of about thirty-two percent. But we know that next year this will drop back down, because there'll only be two people for the whole twelve months. And the fire department, I'm sure if my house burns, it will burn to the ground, because they won't be happy with me, but we did reduce their request for funds for administration. Which was a two-hundred-and-seventy-four percent jump. Voted this year was twenty-five hundred, they asked for ninety-three sixty, we brought it back down to three thousand, five hundred. Which is a forty percent increase, but not what they'd asked for. Their telephone, we had suggested reducing what they asked for the telephone, and they reminded us that they're going to be hooking up with Starlink. And they need that hookup, and they need the extra money for it, so that money got put back in. And fire trucks and supplies, we had pared that line down, and one of the budget committee members whispered to me in my ear. We don't wanna skim on repairs, the fire trucks, so that money went back in. But. What had been a thirty-eight percent increase from their department request became a two percent increase in their budget. You've heard Scotty talk about his, and. His total went from a seven-point-one percent increase.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the fire department for a second? Did I understand correctly that Aaron told me about putting in a separate petition warrant article to restore some of the things that we didn't give him in this, or?
That is my understanding, I heard that, I don't know if he's going to do that, at this point, what he would be requesting is the extra money for administration. And for the chief's salary. And the chief's salary went in twenty-three, it was sixty-two fifty, voted at town meeting last year, it was eight thousand. He was asking for twenty thousand this year, that's a two-hundred, a hundred and fifty percent increase, we put it back to eight thousand. There's also a risk, and this is a long way around to answer your question. If people are beginning to be paid for doing work such as this. Work, the compensation being tied to productivity, work product, they become town employees, that's another whole ball of wax. And, and that's, we don't wanna go there, I don't think, but yes.
What does he mean, is the, the, the chief compensation, the, the amount that he's asking for, is that?
He's asking for twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but he's asking for that because he wants twenty thousand dollars to go spend on groceries, or he wants it, he uses it to reimburse other people or to do other stuff with?
He, when he explained this at the budget committee, he said that he's spending more and more hours every week working on fire department. Requirements.
And he wants to be paid for that.
He wants to be paid for that.
So, but then he really is kind of becoming a town employee.
Yes. Yep, that's my understanding.
So then what will we have, a semi-volunteer fire department?
Well.
Where the chief is a.
I guess you would have a professional chief, and you would have volunteer firefighters, but then you can have deputy chiefs, I bet they would wanna be paid as well, it could. I'm not chicken.
I see Sean, Sean raising his eye right back here, do you have a valuable input for the board on the job?
I mean, the only thing that I was gonna say is that, you know, I mean, I know that. Most of the Upper Valley area. Volunteer chiefs are getting a stipend, and I understand it's between, you know, four and seven thousand dollars or something like that. I mean, I, I, other than that, I don't know.
And there are departments that have a paid chief. And volunteer firefighters.
But if we went that route, so what Deena just said is that, that she is aware that there are departments, upper va, departments in the Upper Valley or the, the region where they have a volunteer fire department with a paid chief. In those circumstances, does the chief then, in addition to the, the compensation, will we have to deal with benefits and those kind of issues, or is it, or is that just all up in the air, we, whatever we decide?
I think you'd have to, I'd have to find out more.
Yeah, I think there's a big section in the state statute about volunteer firefighters especially, but I think you run that risk of. An employee and depending on the number of hours, then you've got other wage laws that apply and benefits that apply, and hold on, Phil, Rich had a question.
Actually, I was gonna say that I was at the, the budget meeting when Aaron came by to talk about his job, and he. If I remember correctly, he was saying that he's spending between thirty and more, more hours a week on the fire chief duties. And that. He realized that even a twenty thousand dollar. Stipend, whatever name you give it, was not a very attractive rate of pay, it was an acknowledgement of the effort that he put in. I also think he said that. To have a fire, a fire chief come in as a paid person, even for a volunteer group, to, to run a volunteer department, would be more like forty thousand dollars, so.
At least.
Those are the. Those are the concerns that he expressed.
And when I was employing people, if you went above seventeen hours a week, you were required to supply benefits.
Wow, seventeen. I don't think we are.
Company rule.
A company rule.
How many hours of work do you put in, Judy?
Depends on the week, I would say I'm right up there with Aaron.
There has to be a balance, it is volunteer fire department, but. You don't want people feeling like they're not getting.
Right, I mean. They are supported, and the fire department is very popular in this town, and, and they do a great job. It, it's just that, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of volunteers in this town, they do a lot of good, and if we paid them all what they deserved, our budget would look very different. And also I'd like to mention about the police department, was it last year or the year before that Sean said, you know, I think we should give up the pay for being on-call? Because it was ending up being enough money that it made a difference, and it, it wasn't working out the way we had thought, and so.
Well, no, that was a twenty-five thousand dollar cost to the town that was being basically used for one or two calls per month, and that is not cost effective to the town's budget.
But that was a hard decision and, and. A good, good fiscal consideration, so that's.
Brit, is that an interesting idea, maybe we could go to a volunteer police department?
Yeah, and you get what you pay.
David, after June, I don't care what you do.
I think they called that a constable.
Oh, gosh, yes. Let's see, what do we got, the just, most of the rest of the things are, I think we talked about before, and. You guys, if you care to look through it, you'll see, but at the end of the day, from the very first draft that we all looked at. Was a three million, one hundred and eight thousand, fifty-four dollar budget, up nine-point-five percent from this year. We reduced it in draft, draft two, we reduced it in draft three, this particular draft is down to an increase of four, oh, there's one more, Deena.
This was before we had.
That's draft five, yes, so now. The budget is two million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which is three-point-eight-nine percent increased.
And just to be clear, this does not reflect any of the school side of this.
That's correct.
Which is.
They will be coming.
Double, it's roughly triple, triple, so the town, all of this stuff we're, we're working with here is about a quarter of the overall expenditures.
Yes.
And on the school side, they're spending on rocket sailors, so.
Can you delete that from your. I heard a rumor that, that this year they're being very conservative, but we will see, they'll become.
They, they just spent two hundred and eighty million dollars on.
I'm sorry.
On window sensors.
I have my head in the twenty-five budget, in twenty-five, the budget that they're gonna be bringing in. May not be spending, as you call it, if we put it. Anyway, so that's where we are, my heart would be in putting some of this stuff back in, not all of it, but. The budget committee asked us to do that, and we did in fact cut. See, I keep going back to that orange paper, a hundred and forty thousand. And change, so we, we met their goal. Ben wanted us to get to three percent, I'm not sure we could do that without firing somebody.
Well, my comment was that. If you cut it and there's, there's pushback and people can justify what they need.
Yep.
Then that's one thing, but to just be asking and not supporting what you, what you're asking for, taking it away, you're getting pushback and you get. Close to, to what they actually need.
Once this goes out to the, all the department heads, you might get some pushback.
Yep.
That's all right.
If, if you folks are okay with this budget, this will go to the department heads, and this will be the next budget that we take to the budget committee.
Seems like you guys did a great job, I'm appreciative that, that you guys did it and Ben and I didn't have to.
Ben did some.
Debbie prodded Ben to do some.
Okay.
Good.
More from folks, I think we.
I guess I wanna say thank you, that was really hard work. I guess I want to say thank you. That was really hard work.
It was.
I, I, oh, I know. I've tried to do it myself. It's like, wait, we can't not spend this money?
Yeah.
Well, okay, we have to. Thank you. Thank you very much.
The reality is, spending money is far easier than not spending money, so you've gotta, gotta make an attempt to put the brakes on anyway.
Yep. Oh, really? Well, eleven fifteen, eleven fifteen. We have a non-public. I'm going to move.
I'm sorry, just one question more about the budget. I should have caught this, but we're, we're staying flat on the whole postponed beach light guards, monitors, all that.
I made a few changes. I took out anything that had to do with the...
Oh, the planning program that came back out.
It's all removed, because they're doing a presentation tonight, actually.
Okay.
So it's down.
Down, but we're not getting rid of them?
We're gonna have the light guards and monitors and, and as it has been the last few years, so it's...
The last year, really.
Yep. Right.
Okay, awesome.
So, non-public, I will move under RSA ninety-one A.